Good evening and welcome to our regular Wasika School Board meeting. Today is Tuesday, no, today is Thursday, June 15, 2023, 3:5:30 PM. We are in Central Building, second floor conference room. We begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I make the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone. Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second it.
Any discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry unanimous. We move on to recognition of our visitors. We don't have any here but us in the central building. But for everyone who is watching us from home, thank you for your interest and please, if you have any comments, send us the comments to our wasikadistricts@gmail.com. Okay, move on to payments of claim. Director Bowers had the privilege to review the claims for this, for the month of May.
I have reviewed the May claims and recommend action of payment for accounts payable for the month of May in the amount of $1,228,128.65 and for payroll for the month of May in the amount of $841,441.74.
We have first, can I get a second?
Second.
You're good.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry unanimous. I'm sorry, I missed when you came in. I would like to welcome our new student representative, Colin Detmer. Welcome to our school board and we are very excited to have you and I hope you will enjoy time with us for next year.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Sorry, thank you. Okay. Okay, let's get, move on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We move to our information items. Can I ask Mr. Hutzpah to talk about our strategic plan, please?
Yes, very good. Thank you and happy June, end of the school year as we've gotten through it and we're already in, almost through with our second week of summer programming, if you can believe it, how fast, how fast that goes in some of our buildings. But today I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about the end of our school years, we're getting into our summer work and we have going on for next year as part of our strategic plan. So thank you for those of you who were able to be at graduation, what a success that was to see 140-plus students cross the stage and celebrate their time here and Wasika Public Schools heading out into the world, as well as our area learning center graduation that happened the week prior, graduating 15 students from there. So that's very successful and exciting for students to see themselves move out into the world and a culmination of pre-kindergarten all the way up through, through high school to get where they're heading and looking forward to seeing what those Blue Jays do, you know, as they move out into the world. But with that, with the end of that, now we're starting on the next year, thinking about that as we're working through there and right now we're doing a lot of planning on programming for the fall. Our staffing is continuing to be finalized here for the fall. We were very fortunate to have the majority of our licensed staff hired and secured for next fall. The last two weeks, we've had a couple other folks who has always, life changes always happens to us, that will have some adjustments to make in the next few weeks, but that's nothing out of the ordinary and nothing that catches us by surprise. As you'll, you'll see here in the next discussion from Ms. Berry, our budget for next year preliminary is being presented tonight. I'm very pleased with how that's shaken out. When you think about efficient operations of a school district, one of our jobs is to provide the, the most effective and positive and robust programming we can for our students within the realm of what a public, a public entity like ourselves can do with our budget. We have to make some decisions at times that are not always the most comfortable and we have to make some prior, we have to list some priorities where we're going to go. And so this spring, we got through that process to be able to prepare a budget for next year, which you'll be approving tonight, which is going to increase our fund balance slightly, just ever so slightly, but it's, but it's in the black, so that's really, that's positive after that strategic spend down of our fund balance was a few years ago. The other thing we're working on very heavily right now is our strategic plan redo, refresh, I should say, because we had a very solid strategic plan in place already, working with teamwork, so you had a chance to meet Sherry last time we visited. She's had a chance to work with our district leadership team several times. We have the, what we call that desire daily experience. What do we want our students, staff and families to experience every day in our schools? And when we drive that towards our mission and our vision of empowering all of our learners to thrive, how do we put the two together? And so one of the things we've been working on with Sherry in the last month since we've met is taking that theory of, of desire daily experience and putting that into some action. So what do we need to do? What it really actually has to happen within the walls of our school buildings or in our fields or in the community to make that happen for our school district students, families and staff? And so it's called theory of action. There's a series of statements that says, if we do this, if we do this, and we do this, then we empower all of our learners to thrive and work through that. So what we're working on now, just finishing up in the next couple of weeks here, is creating next year's proposed vision cards, really going from that classroom all the way up now as we get to classroom to boardroom as, as we walked through last time. The vision cards will then look at our focus areas, determine what we can do to really measure and hold ourselves accountable to those areas. And those will come to you here, we're hoping those will come to you in July for your review and then we can look at what the strategic plan refresh looks like from the board perspective and what your board three-year agenda and the district operational plan will look like from, from that point. I will say that due to your leadership and your ability to stay connected with our community and guide us in the right direction, there's really not that many big rock changes from a strategic plan. We're, we're looking at the right things. There are some things in our strategic plan right now that are not represented, some operations, finances, facilities, some of those things that at the time the previous strategic plan was, was being, was being written, those weren't as high of a priority at the moment versus some of the academic things we were working on at the time. Academically, we're finding ourselves on the right trajectory right now, but we also need to focus on the entire district and all the pieces. So you're going to see the, the strategic plan refresh that could be proposed to you in the next month or so to include some of those other operational areas as well. Effective and efficient use of resources is the term we've been using to hold ourselves accountable to that as well. And you can see that through the budgeting process and the, some of the facility discussions we've had, that's, that's something we're working on daily to make sure we're prepared for that. The last thing that I want to just share with you is as we wrap up, this is what, this is the, I wish you had, sometimes you wish you had three legs because you have a leg in three different years about this time of, about this time of the year, but coming at, coming up in August, like we did last August, I'll take that work session to really go through the vision card results from this last spring that we didn't have as the school year ended, as you did some of the evaluation documents for my work and some of the things you looked at, you had as much information as we have right now with the vision cards, but we have all that information, including some of our assessment data that we'll have for you in August and we'll take a time to look through those vision cards as we transition into next year's vision cards, working through that with our leadership team. So that's what I was gonna, that's all I'm going to share this evening because I want to spend, you know, give Ms. Berry enough time to go through probably the biggest ticket item of our night, which would be the preliminary budget and sometimes that's more exciting than anything else I can share. But any questions you have for me before we move on? Thank you.
Thank you Eric for the update. Now we have Elizabeth Berry to give us an update, to give us a financial update.
Absolutely. So thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you this evening. As Mr. Hutzpah had mentioned, we are going to focus very heavily on our preliminary budget. So just a little bit of background for school districts across the state, all districts need to have a, but a school board approved budget in place before July 1. Our business year runs July 1 through June 30 and so we have taken this time and brought you along in the conversations on some of the changes that we're going to be presenting and as Mr. Hutzpah had mentioned as well, a lot of good work went into this, challenges and making some, not some, you know, easy decisions, but again, I think programming wise, with this budget, we are able to still offer fantastic programming that we always have with Wasika Public Schools. So just a little bit of information on the 2023, 2024 preliminary budget. We did have a very in-depth conversation with the finance committee last Thursday, so we dug a little bit deeper. I'm going to do a little bit more of a high overview or oversight for everybody, but if you have questions at any time, please don't hesitate to stop me. Happy to just take a pause and make sure that I am addressing the questions that you have. The information that you see in front of you is our general fund, that is the largest fund that we have in our district. We have eight total funds and what we do is we take the final budget that the school board approved, which would have been this spring, and that's our starting point for this upcoming year. So that first column that you're seeing is the projected fund balance of June 30, 2023. So as we're coming up, this is where we think we are going to land based on our current year budget. As we go through the audit process, that will be finalized and, but this is the starting point because this is what was approved at the school board, where we think we're going to start. So starting with the general fund, it's broken up into a couple of different categories, non-spendable, restricted and assigned and unassigned. The non-spendable is really, we've already invested in things, whether it's inventory that we have on hand or we have to make some prepayments where it's really does belong in the next fiscal year, but for example, maybe some of our software expires before July 1 or, excuse me, on July 1 and we need to pay for it before it actually expires. So we need to take into account those types of, of items. The restricted accounts are really driven by outside entities, so really state-driven. These are specific resources for specific expenditures and so we track that separately and you can, as you can see, all the way from the projected fund balance, the next column would be our projected revenues, our projected expenditures and that last, that last column is our projected fund balance as of June 30, 2024. So this is again where we anticipate we're going to be, as you can see across the board right now, presenting positive fund balances across, across the accounts. The assigned is more driven by local, local operations. So we as a school district, you as a school board have said, these are certain things that yes, we do have local control on, but we want to make sure that we're tracking those separately because we feel that there, there's a rationale for it. For example, the very first one assigned for passages, which was previously Wasika County off-campus. Since, since this is a collaboration, it's not just Wasika Public Schools, we do assign that because we want to make sure that we're tracking those expenditures and revenues separately. Another great example would be donations. Outside entities are donating funds for us for very specific purposes. We want to make sure that we hold true to what those purposes are for and that's why we assign it, to make sure that we are honoring the wishes of whatever those donors have given us. The last column is our biggest line item where we have the most local control on, on our operations and it is our biggest item in our budget. So right now we are starting the year, anticipating to start the year with about 4.4 million in our unassigned fund balance, projected revenues of just shy of 21.2 million, projected expenditures of just shy of 21.2 million with an estimated fund balance of that 4.4 million. So again, as you can see, we are presenting a balanced budget to you this evening, about $34,000 revenue exceeding expenditures. So it is a very tight budget, but again, we did, we were able to accomplish our goal of being able to, to present a balanced budget to the school. So there are times we talk about days and we talk about percentages and what does that mean for fund balance policy? So for our district, our fund balance policy is anywhere between 15 and 35% is where we want that fund balance policy to be. That, the first column where we're starting that 4,414,000, that represents about 19.7% of fund balance. Okay, so again, right within our fund balance policy, the very end, again, the 4,449,000 represents 21.04%. So again, you're seeing that stability within the fund balance and that that really is our goal moving forward now is to try to stay within, within that range around that Any questions with this one? And we can always come back, but yep, go ahead.
Like couple of those, you know, like restricted for staff development or for the teacher development, we went, you know, from projected balance quite low, what that means to, you know, to the staff and to our teachers?
Right. So really what that means is we have designated funds that we need to set aside each, each year and we're reinvesting those funds exactly where they should be. So for example, staff development, prime examples would be the fellows that we invest in to be able to have teachers on assignment and to be able to invest in whether it's our first year teachers, our second year teachers. Other things would be any professional development opportunities, so the MEP conference that we just had, curriculum writing, letters training, literacy training. So really what we're trying to do is reinvest in our staff and again, that's exactly what that line item is for, is to reinvest in our staff and that's, that's the, so basically what we're saying is we're budgeting for the revenue to come in to be able to reinvest. Now again, more often than not, we do like, for example, that $2,000 at the end of the year will more than likely be around $30,000 at the end of the year, just depending upon the opportunities that are available to us, other grant dollars that are available to us, but we do budget to spend it because that's what it's there for. And I apologize, which other one did you ask? The teacher development and evaluation? That was a one-time offering of dollars. So really, once those are spent, then they're, then they're going to be gone. So again, we just need to find appropriate uses for the intent of those dollars and if we don't use them, then they just move forward to the next year until we exhaust those funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to explain, because I know in our meeting that was brought up, that the restricted for area learning center targeted services in the ALC where you've got that projected fund balance of 300 and some odd thousand dollars and then the ending balance is significantly more, can you just explain that to?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, absolutely. So what has been happening is over the last couple of years, we've had access to federal funding that actually is for the same purpose as an area learning center or targeted services. Targeted services is more at the elementary level and ALC or ALC is the credit recovery or summer school at the 712 level. And so what has been happening is we're still able to claim those students for the time that they're here and the time that we're serving them. So they're additional services to meet students at their needs, to be able to get them prepared for whether it's the next grade level or making sure that they're on grade level. So it's additional services available to them either after school or during, during the summer. So we are able to still claim the, the aid on them or claim the time that they're with us, but the expenditures are being covered by a federal grant. So rather than the expenditures running through here, it's covered by an outside, excuse me, outside source. So that's one of the reasons that fund balance is growing. Once those federal funds are exhausted, they're going to come back into the area learning center and then that'll start evening out again. But again, it's a restricted account, so we need to make sure that those funds stay within that account and it's not flexible being able to move that additional revenue if that's how you want to look at it, into different accounts.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, and I do apologize, this is smaller and I do think you have a copy in front of you that, that you can actually read a little bit better, but these are the remaining funds within our district. Again, the general fund is the largest fund that we have in our district and I'll, graph wise, you'll be able to see that visually in just a couple of slides here. Want to walk you through food service for just a moment. So right now we are projecting to start the year with about $420,000. Again, that's where we approved the budget to end. We are looking at revenues of 1.2 million, expenditures of 1.6. So when our projected fund balance, we, we are still positive, but projecting $100 fund balance. A couple of different things that go into that. For example, that $420,000 represents us spending all of the money that we budgeted for equipment in this current year. As we stand today, we still have not spent about $120,000 of the projects we thought we would be investing in. And so what's going to happen is again, because that's what was budget, excuse me, board approved, I cannot change that number unless I came to you for board approval. So what's going to happen at audit time is they're going to say, oh, wait a minute, you have $120,000 more than we had anticipated. So that number is going to go up to, you know, $540,000, so we're going to start $120,000 higher. So now that 108 becomes $120,000. And then another layer to that is expenditure wise for the budget for '23, '24, very similar story. Okay, which, which projects didn't we get done in current year that now we need to do in next year? So basically the projects are in two years, if that makes sense, because now we want to make sure that they are included in our next year budget to be able to do that. Full disclosure with that, there is a project in there for about $140,000 for a walk-in cooler freezer. We wanted to include it because we know that is something on our radar, more than likely it's not going to happen in '23, '24, but we do want to make sure that we're at least accounting for it to make sure that that can fit within our budget. If that doesn't happen, that budget grows again or that ending fund balance grows another $140,000. So again, I'm very comfortable presenting this budget to you, knowing especially those two large factors with food service.
We also have one additional piece next year with the free meals coming back into, coming back into play. Our revenues declined this particular fiscal year as students got back into paying for lunch because participation goes down as you'd expect it would, given that situation. We anticipate participation to go back up here in the fall, meaning our reimbursable meal count will increase as well. And so I think the revenue count right now is, is quite conservative in terms of, we don't really know what we're going to get, so we can't, we can't predict too high, but we, we know that that's likely going to, we're going to probably see some more revenue than what's there due to the reimbursable meals that the state's providing.
Thank you. Yeah. And just one other layer with food service, it actually does have a restricted dollar amount that you can have in, in the fund balance because really the goal of food service in general is to be self-sustaining, to be able to, at least you can carry enough funds over to be able to reinvest in the program. That's exactly what a fund balance would be for, is to make sure that it has enough funds to be able to reinvest in equipment specific to food service. So you'll see some fluctuations with food service every now and then because you might be building up a balance to be able to make that investment in, in equipment, but per state statute, there is a, a fund balance limit that is set on food service because that, the goal is not to make money on food service, it is to break even and be able to invest in the program. Community educate, oh, sorry, go ahead.
What, what about the legislature passed, the bill they passed about mandatory pay, pay for, for time off, for people having time off, is that, how do you, how do you incorporate that into a budget and what, what did you do there?
So that's not going to be applicable for '23, '24.
Okay.
So that is not built into this budget.
Okay.
And those are things that we'll be working through as we learn more about how that needs to be funded, how people can apply for it. So that's to be determined yet and maybe Eric has a little bit.
They talk about family medical leave.
Yes.
January 1, 2026.
Okay. Gives us time to get it built up.
To prepare for a budget.
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, and there actually is a payroll tax of 0.7% that we have to share with our employees as part of that, that will increase the state revenue with that piece as well, but we have roughly two and a half years to work into that, if I did that math.
Right. And then, and then free, free lunches. Now is the state, is the state going to, are they going to fund that the way they need to or is that?
Is there any stipulations that tack on with that by taking it?
The free meals? Well, there are certain nutrition guidelines you have to fit in and certain vendors you have to use, but that's no different than what we usually have to have anyway.
Good question.
And I suppose just for the sake of, so we know, you get the meal for free. You go through and take an extra three milks, you're paying for that. That's how that goes or an extra cheeseburger, whatever it might be, à la carte still is, still is fee for.
Correct. Yes, so parents still may need to pay. We do want to make that, that clear, but yes, the reimbursable meal, that first meal for both, both breakfast and lunch will be free, whether it's federally reimbursed or state reimbursed.
That'll cause conversations.
Right, right.
Community education, again, they're doing a very nice job of balancing their budget. One line item that we normally do pull out and I just want to continue to reiterate that, so there is, they have multiple categories that are restricted within their fund. So again, specific sources for specific purposes. One of the ones being restricted for school readiness. And this is really our preschool program and our kinder prep program. And so you can see we're starting a fund balance of 41,674,000, right now projecting to end the year at a deficit of that negative $10,900. Couple of different reasons for that rationale. The, the teachers that are associated with those programs are on our master agreement along with our K-12 program. There are two separate salary schedules with that and as we've negotiated over the years, what we've tried to do is try to make that pre-K schedule more competitive and closer to our K-12. And knowing and full disclosure, having those conversations with our WEA as, as we are negotiating, knowing that this, we are going to be looking at a negative balance as those salaries increase and trying to be more competitive with the K-12 salary, this is largely a fee-based program. There is a little bit of state aid and a little bit of levy with it, but it's not funded the same as a K-12 student. And so there is that discrepancy there and that's why they haven't been on the exact same schedule as our K-12, just because they're funded very differently. So we are watching that fund balance, we are absolutely aware that that is on the horizon and we're just trying to work through different ways that we can, whether deliver the, still the same great services, how can we stay competitive, other opportunities there, as you can see the one right above it, that early childhood family education, are there any opportunities to maybe have some of the expenditures in school readiness eligible for that ECFE funding as well? So we're just looking at different opportunities, but just wanted to let you know that we are fully aware that that is something that we need to continue to consider over the years as we negotiate those contracts and, and look at how, what programming we offer.
And, and it is going to be an ongoing challenge because some of the legislative moves that the, the state made without additional funding this particular year, it seems, they seem relatively benign, that now an early childhood teacher can obtain tenure. Now an early childhood teacher now fits the definition of teacher in statute. Those are some things that seem relatively below the radar, but come negotiations time, we can guarantee that our staff will be asking for them to be on the salary schedule then because they are a teacher, like their peers, and they are, based on statute now.
So then will that open it up to where you can get that funding from other areas in the future?
I would hope so, but I, but there's no guarantee of that. And so the challenge is we, we're dealing with two sets of teachers with two separate funding sources, one being almost like food service, cash in, cash out, fee-based service, one being state aid, wanting to be paid the same, how much can you charge your families? It's, before it's unreasonable, that's the goal. So we will be, continue to advocate to be able to use it because we have, you know, healthy fund balance in our early childhood family ed, so can we use that for the piece? The other thing we will do is we'll end up having to subsidize with our general fund some of those dollars and that's the conversation during negotiations. The rest of the K-12 teachers then are going to need to subsidize their settlement to be able to pay their, their early childhood colleagues appropriately and, and that's, but we, that's been on the radar now for several years and we'll keep working through it and, and it'll, it'll come. Voluntary pre-K is being funded now, a little bit more from the state through this legislation, but that's a support for the students. And so it doesn't necessarily help our cost, other than potentially increases our student count. There's, they're, 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 we get some revenue for those students, but not to the level where it pays for itself. So we'll see where that goes.
Is that pre-K stuff even in the community education or that's a whole different category?
So yeah, so pre-K is that school readiness piece.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The next fund is our, our fund six, which is our building construction, again, hoping and/or planning to be able to deplete that fund next year. So that is finishing off some indoor air quality projects based on a bond that had been sold and, and just as things progress and, and the contractor continues to give us our doc, the, the payment documents, those, those should be depleted by the end of next year. Debt service fund, it's all based on basically our levy and our debt schedule. So for those bonds that we have outstanding, we already know what our, our debt payment schedule is, we know what the levy amount is based on that debt schedule and again, so that, that is set by our, our schedules. The next one would be unassigned fund balance, which is the trust fund, fund eight. These are scholarships that have been entrusted to us as a school district and so what we do is we take the, the principal and we invest it and at the end of the year when the CD matures, we are able to award those, the interest, excuse me, to the scholarship recipients. Right now, this just includes the current scholarships that have been set at the very end of this year and you may have, I think it was either last meeting or the meeting before where the Rice State, a state gave us a significant amount of dollars, it was about $80,000. So when we do our final budget, that will also be included in this one as well. So you will see about $300,000 when you see a final budget. It's just since that was newer and we haven't invested the funds, we don't know exactly what that scholarship amount is going to be, that will change for us. And again, that came after we had already set the, the, the final budget, so that's why there's that discrepancy, you'll see that later. Fund 18, this, these are called our custodial funds. So basically what that means is we're the fiscal host or we're the pass-through for some of these agencies. Again, there are scholarships that run through us that we have not been entrusted with us, through us. So for a prime example will be any scholarships that are running through Wasika Area Foundation. The foundation holds all of those, they give us the amount of scholarships to be awarded and then we, so they donate to us and then we wear the pass-through and then we cut those checks to the students more, more often than not in, in December of, of the year. So again, we're kind of an in and an out for those. Other ones might be the Todd Mann Scholarship, so those again are very heavily driven on athletic, athletic. athletic activities, community education participation, so that's a support to families that can use that to help offset their fees. And then the last one that we have in Fund Eighteen is called the Wasika County Collaborative for Families, WCCF. This is a collaboration between Wasika, New Richland, and JWP, as well as Min Prairie. And again, we're just the fiscal host for this, and this is the fund that helps provide the family service coordinators that we have in our district. So Wasika has two, JWP has one, and New Richland has one. And again, we're just, we pay the bills and we also receive in the revenue, so we're just maintaining that balance for them until it is depleted, if it does ever become depleted. And then the very last fund that we have is our dental fund. Again, it's our own self, it's our own internal program for our dental, and again, continues to maintain a healthy fund balance. We do talk about this quite frequently at our insurance and safety committee meetings. So I apologize, that was a lot. Caitlin, if you want to go to the next slide, but if there's any questions with any of the other funds, I'm happy to answer those. Okay? These ones will be a little bit quicker, I just want to show you visually how this looks. So expenditure-wise, you can kind of just see more visually how our funds are broken up, so about 80% of that is our general fund, and you can see the remaining funds, which total the pages on the prior slides, if you want to go to the next one. And then this just breaks down the general fund expenditure budget. What does that look like? So of the 80% of our budget, what does that mean to us? Again, very heavily driven as a people organization, so you can see almost 72% is based on salaries and benefits. Purchased services, those might be things, a prime example would be transportation. So any kind of contracted service that we might have within our district, maybe shared services between other districts, because maybe, you know, we might not need a full 1.0, nursing services that we might need to contract for, supplies are exactly as they are, capital outlay, this would be more of our equipment. Other expenditures, those are going to be dues, memberships, being a part of MSBA, those kinds of things. Other financing sources, this is that contribution or the split for, like, again, the performing arts center manager position is in community education, but again, the goal is that community education does not take a loss on that, so if there's any difference, that's where those other financing sources come in. The other part of this, and again, this should be far less, not that it's much this year, but it should be far less next year, would be any bad debt within food service. So what that means, if there's any negative food service balances and they're uncollectible, and we do try multiple times, but if they are uncollectible, food service cannot legally take on that loss or that hit. And so we have to do a transfer between the general fund and food service to make sure that food service stays whole, and then any of that bad debt comes to the district off, or, excuse me, to the district. We do, like I said, we do work with collections, and then if we are able to recoup those, those stay within the general fund because they covered that loss. Okay? Next one. This is the same visual, just on the revenue side, so again, very similar to what we saw with the expenditure side, 81% of it being the general fund. Let me go to the next one. And then just breaking down the general fund, well, what does that make up? So you can see, almost 81% of this is state-driven. The levy or local source is 8.3%, I'll say, excuse me, levy 8.3%, local 7.3. Local means gate receipts, activity fees, participation fees, that is also medical assistance billing. So that's what that local dollar represents, and then you can see the federal dollar at 3.5%. This is much less than this current year, due to a lot of the expiration of the federal funds that we are going through at this point. So a little bit of a change from fiscal year 24, or, excuse me, 23 to 24 on that federal piece. Okay? And then this is just a snapshot, again, when we talk about those days and the percentages, and what is the history been with Wasika Public Schools? You can see we're settling nicely into stabilizing around that 20% fund balance, and then the yellow is the days, the blue is the percentage, and those red bars are our fund balance policy.
Just a quick question, if you be look, you know, since 2012, you know, we are getting closer where we were in 2012. Is it concern of our district that, you know, we are, I mean, it's still 20%, but we are going down. What do you think? It just?
No, and again, our auditors help us as well of like, you know, what is a reasonable fund balance? Each district is a little bit different, just based on size as well, so percentage-wise, we need to be careful and mindful. If you hear percentages from other districts, you also have to take into account what their overall budget is when they're looking at percentage for fund balance. So again, auditor-wise for Wasika Public Schools, this is a very nice place to be. One of the reasons that we set that fund balance policy is to also help us avoid or and/or make sure that we can continue operations without borrowing cash. Whatever we can do to still sustain operations without having to borrow and pay interest, we would much rather put those funds into the programming versus expenditures into interest payments. So no, this is a really nice place to be. One of, I would just say maybe historical perspective on why maybe some of it had gotten high for a while. Some of those earlier years were some leaner years, and we had gone through some budget reductions and adjustments, and we were slowly trying to add things back to make sure that we could sustain it. And I think now, as we've kind of settled into what our student population is, you know, what our staff ratio should be, I think we are in a really nice spot moving forward and have a good plan in place. Thank you. Any other questions that you can think of? Yes?
Compensatory revenue for next year, how is that going to be figured?
Right, so that is built into the budget. That did help us, I don't know, if you want to go to one of the very first one, first slide, second, well, second slide, not the intro slide, there we go. Oh, one more, sorry. So you can kind of see our basic skills. So restricted for basic skills is the same as compensatory, there's, it's one in the same. So you can see, revenue-wise, we're projecting about 1.5 million, which is about 600,000 more than this current year. And so what we were able to do is move some staff that are eligible for that funding. So for example, some of the ways that we use, that we're budgeting to use the compensatory dollars would be counselors, nursing staff, lower class sizes, interventions. Those are all eligible for basic skills. So what we were able to do is take them, those expenditures that originally were in the unassigned fund balance, and now they're being recorded in the expenditure line on basic skills. So that was an excellent help to our district, especially with those federal funds expiring.
And how's the state's going to put more money into reducing cross-subsidy? How's that going to work with our budget?
Right, so that is already, regardless, all of it was already in the unassigned fund balance. So our cross-subsidy, the additional amount was already built into there, so the additional cross-subsidy revenue is now on the revenue side. So that increased about 700,000 for us this year.
So you kind of knew what was coming?
We had a-
Somewhat.
Well, as we were having conversations, we were having different conversations on what that could look like. So it is less than we had anticipated it would be, you know, there were different conversations, whether it was 50%, 40%, and so before we set the final budget, we did wait until we knew what that final dollar amount was.
Yeah, so this, this, just over the threshold positive budget is including all of those additional revenues. There's not going to be more additional revenue added to this based on anything else with those sources.
Any questions? Okay, anything else you can think of for the budget, or anything else I can help answer? Can I, oh, go ahead.
So, all the salary negotiations, that's all included in your, right, so there's?
Great comment. So, yes, all of our salaries will be up for negotiation. We did build in an estimate of maybe at least where we could start, just so we have something accounted for in the budget. And then based on negotiations, hopefully that's where that final budget will come in, when, if it's all done at that point, we'll be able to project better what that final expenditure dollar amount will be. All right. I just, I hope you don't mind, I just want to take one moment to thank the board, the community of Wasika administration for the many, many years of support and encouragement. This district has been amazing, and I've been extremely blessed to be a part of it. So I just want to thank you for all of the faith and trust that you put in me. You have definitely helped me grow, and you have challenged me, and I feel like I am just that much better of a person walking away from this district, and you are in fantastic hands, and I just want to say I will always be a Blue Jay, and just am very grateful for the opportunity, so thank you very much.
I think I would like to say for all of us that you will be missed, and, you know, it was always a pleasure to see you in person, but, you know, your knowledge and everything, what you always helped personally me, but the questions and stuff, I think I'm talking for everyone, you know, you will be missed, and I hope you will come back to visit us and sit over there in the visitor row. But no, thank you, Elizabeth, and good luck wherever you go, whatever you do.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we can move to committee and board member reports. Charlie, would you like to start?
Is this on, on our, on the other meetings, the other meetings we have?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I had a meeting with the arena board here on Tuesday morning, I believe it was, and we talked about several things, you know, there's some pipes that repair down there. One of the things, one of the things we're still working on is Zamboni, there's always some issue there. It's something with the refrigerant that's used there, there's a refrigerant change that needs to happen, but as long as everything works, we've just been staying there, so if anybody, one of the things is staffing, they need Zamboni operators, so Dave, I won't wait for you to step up for that.
Only if you can drive it left-handed.
Yeah, it, they have six people trained, and they need eight to 10 people to take that, because, you know, it runs every night through, you know, ice is going in on the Fourth of October this year, so, you know, they start talking about that at this time of the year already, we're sweating summer out, but anyhow, finances there is going fine. There's some other things, the hockey association is happy, so it was a good meeting, everybody's pretty happy, so financially it's secure right now, and hockey program is often, is going to be off and running again, so I think that's the only one I was at. So there's a policy meeting that I missed the other afternoon, but somebody else in there was probably, I like him talking about that.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, it was just as exciting as always. Yeah, we went to the policy meeting, that was pretty brief, nothing too, nothing too spectacular there, I don't think we really had much for change at all, anything, so. And I did sit in the district accountability advisory committee, that was very interesting. Just seeing, you know, where our students start and finish throughout the year, and overall, I'd say it's pretty reasonably acceptable, so.
All right. I had, was part of a personnel committee since the last meeting, and we covered some of the things we've already talked about here. Was also part of the accountability advisory committee, and I would say the same, it, I think, looks good. The administrators, I think, recognize, and it's nice to see them look at that and see how that information can help them make programming decisions. And the finance committee, which we talked about the budget, and that's it.
Dave?
Okay, I'm not going to be short. I was also at the district accountability advisory committee, and I just gave a, Brooke McGuire gave us this summary, and I just wrote a few notes here that you might be interested in. At Hartley, K through three, they do fast bridge. K through first grade does early math and reading, and second and third grade does A math and A reading, and overall, looks like they made pretty good growth at Hartley this past year. At the intermediate school, we do NWEA, which is Northwest Evaluation Association. Some statistics here, fourth through sixth grade math, good growth, grades four through five, not quite as much growth, grade six. NWEA, fourth through sixth, reading, growth, grades four and five, but not a whole lot of growth in grade six. NWEA, seventh and eighth grade math, little growth, grade seven, good growth, grade eight. NWEA, eighth grade reading, some growth. Overall math, grades four through eight, definitely growth at each grade. Overall reading, grades four through eight, growth at each grade except grade eight. Graduation rates, 2019 to 2022, very high 80s to the low 90s, and of course, that includes the ALC. And I did get a chance to watch two webinars. The first one was entitled "The Board's Role in Ensuring Goals Are Met," and they're referring there to the world's best workforce, and I found that pretty interesting. The second one I found very interesting, it was the 2023 Legislative Recap, and I thought they did just an excellent job at recapping everything that went on at the legislature, how it turned out, all the different parts of it. And if you ever have an hour sometime and you can get on the MSBA website, you can look at the recording of that 2023 Legislative Recap, and I would say it's well worth your time. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Finance meeting, I'm not going to touch on that, and then I've got the superintendent evaluation, which we'll address later, so those are the ones I had the last few weeks.
Thank you. All my committees were covered already. We can move to our recognitions and positive board feedback. Charlie, please.
Went to, we went to the ALC graduation, it was good to see students there, they seemed to be engaged, and I think, congratulations to the staff, the staff is doing an excellent job there with them folks, it's good to see that. Graduation was, it was good, like Eric talked, 140 kids walked across stage and got their diplomas, which was, which was excellent. Let's see, what else did I do? Oh, yeah, it's on the Wasika paper that our track team really did well at the state, we won a state championship in track and field, so congratulations to the coaches and the kids for that, so, I guess that's what I got.
I got to visit the last couple of days there where our kids got to have their, participate in their track and field in elementary, and it was fun, get to see all the kids and see them pretty much kind of, they get their goodbyes in there too, because it was the last day or two of their school year, so I was pretty enjoying, nice weather for it.
Colin, do you have anything?
Yeah, graduation went really well. That was fun to be a part of, watch my sister graduate, so, yeah, just good luck to them as they continue on their journey.
Thank you. Grant?
Most of my other repeat, congratulations to all the track team, and I think, I think all the teams had some postseason, so that's always fun, and the graduation, and thanks again to Elizabeth and all of her 16 years and the work she's done here.
Dave?
The baseball team finished above 500, and in my world, that's a good thing. Doesn't always happen. Anna Pollak was named, or I guess she got the job of being the Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council Director to take over for Brenda Byron. Brenda's also from Wasika. I think that's going to be a good thing for Wasika Public Schools with her involvement with theater here, to have that connection with her at the Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council, so that's a good thing. And something a little different, I would like to mention John Stensel. John passed away here just a few days ago. John worked for Wasika Schools over 30 years, he ended up being the Director of Buildings and Grounds towards the end of his time with Wasika Public Schools. He had, I think, a pretty important role to play in all of that work that was done at the high school a few years ago, so we want to remember John.
Sure.
I don't have much else to add, other than the events that have already been covered, so.
Yeah. I just would like to say thank you to our staff and everybody for the year. We finished very well, and kids are happy to be out of school, at least mine are, and thank you again. I know they are still continuing to be in school and get ready for next year, and we appreciate it. And thank you, Elizabeth again, and Eric, and to you guys too, to support our district. Thank you. Okay. Okay. We can move to our action items. Half rule, right? Okay. Could I please get a motion for, to approve Item A? Could I please get a motion for, to approve item A?
I can motion to approve the resolution of acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second?
We have first and second, any discussion? Thank you, thank you for all the donors, for the contribution for this month. And as there's no discussion, I will call for a vote as it is a roll call. Please say yes or no. And Caitlin, would you call a roll, please?
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Charlie Freed?
Yes.
Aaron Kruger?
Yes.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes. Motion carry anonymous. We can move to action item B. Can I please get a motion for item B?
I'll make a motion to acknowledge EMC Insurance as insurance carrier for 2023-24 school year.
Second?
Second?
Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Can we move to, we can move to item C. Can I get a motion for item C?
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2023-2024 preliminary budget.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Can I please get a motion for item D?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-24 fundraising activities.
Second?
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. For item E, I will call the, I will read the resolution. Okay. Designation of an identified official with authority for education identity access management. The Minnesota Department of Education Professional Educator Licensing Standard Board and the Office of Higher Education require annual designation of an identify official with authority for each local education agency that uses the education identity access management system. The identify official with authority is responsible for authorizing, reviewing and recertifying user access for their local education agencies in accordance with the State of Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all user access right, rights to Minnesota state system must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will authorize user access to State of Minnesota education secure systems in accordance with the user's assigned jobs duty and will revoke that user access when it's no longer needed to perform their job duties. I, Adita Mansfield, recommend to board authorize Superintendent Eric Hutzpeth, H U D E at Wasika K-12 MN US, to act as, as the identified official with authority for Wasika Public School, I D S zero eight to nine, effective July 1st, 2023. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay. Good. Oh, yes. Okay. Can I please get a motion to approve item F?
We need a vote, we need a vote on E.
Oh, sorry, okay. Okay. Okay.
You want that one?
Do I?
Okay. Did I ask any discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Okay, now we can go to item F. Can I please get a motion for item F?
I move we approve the filed 2022-2023 district calendar as amended.
Second?
Any discussions?
Just for the, just for the community, but also for the board, we use it the end of every school year because this basically amends the days we had, weather closures and different changes during the year. So there wasn't any change to the calendar dates. We just have to then go back and acknowledge the days that would have been e-learning or a snow day, that sort of thing. So that's why you see, and the list is longer than my, than we hope for years to come.
Thank you, Eric. Any additional discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. For item G, we are moving to acknowledge milk bid. Elizabeth?
Right, so a little bit of discussion with this one. We had gone through the milk bid process that was approved by the school board with all the timelines and we did receive milk bids during the timeline. We did receive three bids from, from various vendors and the low bid has, has caused us to pause for a moment. So we did seek legal counsel on the suggestion on how to move forward and their, their suggestion is that we move forward with rejecting all bids and based on the threshold of our purchase. So for example, bids are required for $175,000 and more in a purchase. Our milk purchase probably at max would be $75,000 in a year. And so again, our attorney has suggested that we move forward with rejecting all bids. So that would be our recommendation for this evening for the school board is to reject all bids, just based on some pause and concern with production as well as performance with the low bidder. And then move forward as our attorney has suggested where we can legally move forward and initiate or engage in direct negotiation with at least two viable vendors. So that would be our recommendation moving forward with this evening is to reject all of the milk bids. But I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that you might have with that.
I think you've got stipulations on what companies you can get food from and as we think you mentioned earlier, how many are available out there?
Well, and I think that's one of the reasons that our attorney also, they looked at all of the information that we gave, since we have three viable bids right now. Again, that is one of the reasons why they did recommend moving forward with rejection because we do know we have two viable vendors that we could directly negotiate with.
In my experience, I've seen as many as four for milk, that's about, that's where we're at, regionally.
Okay.
Yeah.
So based on that threshold, does that mean that when the negotiation happens and we find the preferred one, it will still come back to us or it won't anymore?
I would recommend that it still does come back because then again, it, it brings a little bit of closure to this process in general. And then moving forward, so it would be, the milk bid was for two years. My assumption is that would be something that depending upon the negotiation process, would come back to you as a board because it would be a contract that would, we would sign with the vendor. And then moving forward, rather than a milk bid process, we would come to the board and seek a milk quotation process. Just again, a little bit of semantics with language, but again, that gives us more flexibility and we're still within the realm of our legal obligation because of that spend.
But yes, we bring this back to, given, given the discussion, where we're heading right now, certainly we bring that back to the board for approval.
Any additional discussions or questions? Should I just make a motion to reject all bids for milk?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm making motion to reject all the bids that we got for milk at this time. Can I get second?
I'll second that.
We never reject anything.
Okay. Any discussions?
I have one more question. Are other school districts having similar issues?
Yes.
Is there a reason for that? I mean, in the whole milk industry?
It has to do with personal performance and, and legal issues and labor availability and, and some companies can provide the service and some companies cannot. And I mean, we, I've had situations in my career where in January, the foods, the food vendor just can't deliver anymore. I mean, it happens. And right now, we're in the bidding process where we, right now, we, we were best, better off to move forward this direction and see what our next option is.
Any additional discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Moving to item H, can I please get a motion for item H?
I'll make a motion that we approve Clifton Larsonell on engagement letter.
Second?
Second?
Any discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Can we move, can I, yeah, I can. I will move to item I. Can I please get a motion to, for, can I get a motion for item I? Please.
A motion that we approve the disposal of technology items.
Second?
Any discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Can I please get a motion for item J?
I'll make a motion that we approve disposal of Hartley Elementary Media Center items.
Can I get a second?
Second?
Any discussions?
I'll just one question. Does this stuff just pretty much go to like recycling landfill? Is that pretty much what it is? Yeah.
The, the things that we can't donate or get rid of or put to usable service.
But there's places that you check to donate.
Correct.
Okay. Any additional discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Can move to item K, it's approved superintendent evaluation. Alyssa, could you please read our evaluation report?
So, the super, superintendent performance evaluation for the school year 2022-2023, summary evaluation. As indicated in school board policy 304, the Wasika Public School District Board conducts an annual evaluation of the superintendent. All seven school board directors participated in the evaluation of Superintendent Eric Hutzpeth. This evaluation was based on the four goals Mr. Hutzpeth set for the 2022-2023 school year. Board members were asked to rate each goal on a scale of highly effective, effective, developing, and ineffective. For goal number one, the 2022-2023 student achievement vision cards, four board members selected highly effective and three members selected effective. The vision card process is effective and provides accountability. Continue to show the board how the results of the vision cards connect towards academic achievement progress. For goal number two, community engagement, three board members selected highly effective and four members selected effective. The addition of new communication tools, for example, coffee with the superintendent and the district newsletter have both been beneficial and we would like to continue to build on this to engage our community. For goal number three, the budget stabilization, six board members selected highly effective and one board member selected effective. The budget stabilization and rightsizing process was handled professionally and the appropriate personnel were consulted to make those decisions. The board was pleased with the process and the outcome. For goal number four, the doctoral program, three board members selected highly effective, three board members selected effective, and one member did not answer. Progress towards completing the doctorate is evident and this effort demonstrates that our superintendent is a role model for staff and for students. The board looks forward to seeing how the results of Mr. Hutzpeth's dissertation research will benefit the district. In summary, Mr. Hutzpeth conducted his annual goals in a highly effective manner. The board feels that Mr. Hutzpeth's strengths are his communication skills. The board continues to appreciate the weekly email updates and feels we should continue to partner with the superintendent on community engagement and support the superintendent to implement the budget and complete his doctoral program. That was submitted June 15th, 2023 by the Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
Thank you. Can I get second?
Second?
Any discussions? Okay. I think, I just would like to say thank you to our Superintendent Eric Hutzpeth. Just keep going.
Well, it continues to be, continues to be a great place to be. And we're really making, making gains as you've seen with your committee reports and through our discussion. And so I'm looking forward just continuing to, to grow and, and our goal is always to be, if not the best, one of the best districts in the state of Minnesota and we're, we're on that path.
Thank you. Any additional discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Can I get motion for item K, please? Those are our-
Item L, right?
Oh. Oh, yes, A. Okay. Can I please get a motion to approve item L?
I'll make a motion to approve the reviewed policies.
And those policies are 208, 209, 210, 211, 212, 213, and 214.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carry unanimous. Okay. Completed our action items, now we have upcoming items and reminders. Our work session is July 6th, meeting, regular meeting is July 20th. And we have Wasika County Fair coming July 12th through 16th. And I think I saw the email from Caitlin that please respond and find, I think, the spots available for us to participate and be, be there to represent our school board at the Wasika County Fair. It's always fun to be there for a couple hours. Well, I guess that's the end and I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting, if you all agree.
Second?
Second? Oh, no, we need to say all. I'm already done, no. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now I cannot. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Nice job.